All right, shall we call this meeting to order? I'll call the City Council Committee of the Whole of March 27, 2023 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll, please.
Raritan?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather? Prather is absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, thank you. And first, under public comment, we have Pam Fettis. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening. Last week, I was asked about growth dimensions role with Project Yukon. And to be quite honest, we cannot bring this project, much less any project, to our region without our partners. For each project we seek or respond to, it takes multiple components to work together in sync with our partners. First, it takes infrastructure: water, sewer, power, gas, broadband, roads, land, real estate, product, customers, a skilled workforce, an education pipeline, and programs. Second, it takes incentives, both state and local. It takes federal grants and state grants. It also takes legislation, domestic and international policies, takes building relationships with businesses, site selectors, and brokers, and government. It takes research and marketing to understand how a community of 25 to 54 people can compete with larger cities with several amenities. It takes identifying the gaps and working with partners to remove them, articulating our advantage, the benefit that might, may not be visible to a prospect. Growth Dimensions could not achieve this all by ourselves, but someone has to collaborate with a minimum of 20 partners for each opportunity. Businesses use Growth Dimensions as a venue to ensure confidentiality, coordination, and facilitation of any challenges that may come across. Now, we are blessed to have three staff with multiple roles and duties who have been cross-trained so not to miss a response to a deadline, a business call, or an opportunity. What do we gain from this? Well, we gain a community that we're proud of, being part of growth, growing opportunities for the future of Belvidere and region, to see jobs for our residents, to increase revenue for our public partners, unlimited opportunities for our youth, and growing and sustainable community. We hope that the city of Belvidere sees our partnership as valuable as we do. Thank you.
You should Pam.
Thank you.
All right, and then as well, we have John Albertini here. John?
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's John Albertini. I live at 506 Park Avenue in the city of Belvidere in the county of Cook, or Boone, sorry. I'm starting to sound like somebody else now. My wife tells me always to make a good presentation of myself and to make her proud. So to do so, I'm going to do what she would like. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the council and the entire council, the attorney, and Marsha Freeman for bringing this up. It was about when I brought in the bill for the water meters for Four Seasons. I brought 65 people in here, or 45 that fit out of 125. They all appreciated what I did to get this to the council, but they wanted me to thank the council for voting for it and passing the ordinance to make their lives a little I feel it's a great achievement for me, but I also think it's a great achievement for this council to help their constituents in the manner that they did. Again, I'd like to thank Marsha, I'd like to thank the city attorney, and everybody who voted for this, well, most everybody who voted for this. And that's all I'm going to say, so that my wife will be proud when I go home. Thank you very much. Is there any questions anybody has for me? That's good. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
You know, I guess I'd be remiss to remind the council and anybody listening here that today, as you know, we had another shooting in Nashville, Tennessee. And another, it's horrific. I think it's unconscionable. We send children to school, and they don't come back. A lot of times, teachers as well become victims. And I really believe a lot of it is just evil insanity. And I just wanted to have a moment of silence for the families, for the children's families, for the teachers, and for everybody, not just Nashville, but I think this hits home for everybody. I know it does here in the city, and I know it does with all of you. So let's just have a moment of silence, if we could, please. Thank you. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees? Number one, public safety unfinished business? We have none. Number two, public safety new business? Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. Provide my update since last month for the council. Last Thursday, the police department met with the Fire and Police Commission where we interviewed three potential promotional candidates. At the end of those interviews, the commission selected Detective King to replace Sergeant Smaha as the next Belvidere Police Department Sergeant. His swearing-in will be April 27 at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. This Wednesday, we will be, the police department will be interviewing two entry-level applicants. And if they pass the interview, they go on to the psychological and medical with a conditional offer. If they pass those two examinations, then they will also be sworn in on April 27 at 10:00 a.m. and attending Basic Academy at Suburban Law Enforcement in Dupage, College of Dupage, on May 1. They will be replacing Deputy Chief Gardner and Officer Moore, whose retirements are slated for May 1. Did I say March 1? I meant it, May 1, if I didn't say that. And in this transitional process, there is a trickle-down effect with the retirement of Deputy Chief Gardner. Officer, K-9 Officer Zaff will be reassigned to investigations, and with that, will open up a K-9 position. The K-9 handler that is selected, we are in the process currently, will go to training, and ultimately, we will reassign Officer Zaff's K-9 solo to the new K-9 officer. That training will consist of six weeks and will cost approximately $4,500. So upcoming, you can expect in the near future, the police department will be requesting to dispose of several vehicles that are currently housed in our storage facility, which is about the capacity. You'll see a 2004 Dodge Intrepid and a 2009 Dodge Charger, neither of which start. Historically, we've used them for VIP vehicles. They haven't been used in years just due to various mechanical issues. The issues to fix the cars would cost more than what the cars are worth, so that will be coming forward here in the near future. We'll also be requesting to dispose of a FEMA trailer that was granted to the department shortly after Katrina through the federal government. That trailer was then gutted with the intent of creating some sort of command vehicle, which has never come to fruition. At this point, the cost of actually creating a command vehicle would probably be more expensive than buying a command vehicle ourselves if we so choose to look in that direction, which at this point, we're not. And then a 2008 Dodge Durango, which is the vehicle that the CSO was driving, it's pretty much rusted through. When we get it washed, it rains. And ultimately, that was the vehicle that Chief Noble drove before he got the vehicle that Deputy Chief Gardner is driving now. So it has been handed down and repurposed several times, and that's something that we will be bringing to you here in the near future. So if you have any questions, I'll entertain them at this time.
Any questions for Chief Woody? All right, hearing none. Item B, Chief, we have in our packets the city of Belvidere and District 100 Reporting Surveillance Access IGA. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packets, you have for your review the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of Belvidere Police Department and Board of Education, Belvidere Community Unit, School District 100. This IGA will address and allow information sharing between the department and the district that may otherwise be regulated and restricted under the Illinois Juvenile Court Act or the Family Education and Privacy Act. In addition to regulated information sharing, the district agrees to share access of live security camera feeds to its buildings in the event of a health or safety emergency to the department officers responding to such emergency. Upon approval of the IGA, it will remain effective and in full force unless terminated by either party upon 30 days prior written notice. I would request a motion to approve the reporting and surveillance access intergovernmental agreement between the city of Belvidere Police Department and Board of Education of Belvidere Community Unit, School District 100.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion regarding that motion? Honorable Woman Freeman?
Thank you. So Chief, this is, so if there's something happening inside the school, like a forbidden active shooter or something, they can turn on their cameras and feed them to you? Or is this just regular surveillance of everyday kids in the hallway?
Prelimarily, my conversation with Superintendent Shug left me to believe that we would have remote access, either by our own sign-in and password for emergency purposes only. So as you, you know, gave the example of an active shooter, God forbid, if there's a fire inside, maybe that's something that first responders could utilize for that purpose, or if there's some other emergency that maybe, you know, would happen upon the school, we could utilize the feed that way as well.
Okay, and then the ILCS 405/1-7, that pertains to like privacy of records, like court records on juveniles? You guys aren't going to be diving into that, right?
Which page is that?
That's right on the first page up at the top. It's ILCS 405 1-7.
Yeah, the agreement's spelled out as far as what the expectation's going to be in terms of who can disclose what and when. Ultimately, there will be guidelines that are set up between the school district and the Belvidere Police Department, which is forthcoming. This is to give you a broad view of what the expectation of this agreement's going to cover.
Okay, thank you.
Just so the council understands, a version of this agreement's in place already. It just hasn't been updated to reflect current statutes and things like that, and I think since before I started here. So it's been around for a very long time. The school district and the city has shared records pursuant to law in the past. This is simply updating it with the new addition being the ability to share video feeds in an emergency.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Then we have a motion to approve the reporting and surveillance access intergovernmental agreement between the city of Belvidere Police Department and Board of Education of Belvidere Community Unit, School District 100. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have item C, Fire Department Update. Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the past 30 days, the members of the Belvidere Fire Department have responded to 234 calls for service, averaging 7.8 calls per day. 159 of those were emergency medical service calls. There was one building fire. It was a fire in Harvard that they responded to mutual aid. There were four gas leaks as Frontier continues to lay fiber optic lines throughout the city. There was two carbon monoxide found incidents, four motor vehicle accidents with injuries, two motor vehicle accidents without injuries, and one motor vehicle that struck a pedestrian. Included in those are 10 assists to the public, two assists to the police department. One was for a subject barricaded in the oasis, and they forced the door to get the subject out in a legal burn. In the past 30 days, we gave mutual aid twice. One was the Harvard building fire that I mentioned, and the other was a prolonged extrication at Reed's Crossing, a car accident. And then we received mutual aid three times. All three times were from the District 3 ambulance responding to medical calls. I'd like to briefly mention the Reed's Crossing incident and just recognize the efforts of Jeff Vaughn, Todd Winnie, and Corey Mitchell. They had, the situation was a passenger vehicle got struck head-on by a large truck. The individual required prolonged extrication. To the last of my knowledge, the individual's stable and recovering, and they assisted District 2. It was a District 2 call. They called for extra help since it was prolonged extrication. The patient was flightlifted from the scene. I just wanted to recognize those three individuals for assisting and doing well for that individual. Also wanted to recognize Corey Mitchell on March 7. He completed his first year, which is the probationary year, and he gained the rank of firefighter. You begin as a probationary firefighter, and he met all the objectives, all the tests, the three-month, six-month, nine-month evaluations. He's a great person. He's a good paramedic, and he's a good firefighter, so glad to have him assisting the community. Just to give an update, in preparation for Captain Cunningham's retirement, we've started working with the Police and Fire Commission. We have a total list of 15 candidates on that list. We have processed the first seven. Two of the seven withdrew or passed the first time as they were hired already by other agencies. And then we performed five background investigations. Background investigation also includes a PEP test. I believe you guys have heard that before, but it's basically an employability test. Looks at different characteristics, work ethic, attitudes towards absenteeism, tardiness, things like that. Four of the five did not make it past that. We do have one individual who is scheduled for a polygraph. This individual is a great candidate, already a fully certified firefighter and a paramedic. I am hoping he does well on the polygraph, which is scheduled on the 29th, this Wednesday in the morning. If he does pass, he'll have the oral interview in the evening. If he passes that, he would receive a conditional offer of employment to fulfill Captain Cunningham's spot pending full medical evaluation and a psychological evaluation. So that's where we are on that. The new engine is completed. It is sent out for third-party pump testing. As you guys know, it was built in Florida. McQueen is flying out Lieutenant Swanson, who is the head of the Truck Committee, and myself, to pay for the engine if it passes final inspection. So we have to inspect the vehicle. If it does pass final inspection, it will be released for delivery. And then, once it's delivered, it would have to be logoed, lettered, and equipped with our equipment off of our current Engine 103, is the 92 subfin, that will be then put into reserve status. And so it should be moving pretty quickly now after I get back. That date is April 5 that we're doing the final inspection. So when we get back, we'll have a good timeline. There will be some type of ceremony in service of the new engine. Ambulance service update. So we've termed our ambulance division, the Emergency Medical Care and Transportation Division. We have 24 business days till they will be providing the service for the citizens in Belvidere. On March 6, you guys gave approval to sign the agreement with Metro. On March 7, they started accepting applications. On March 17, I told them we have to stop accepting applications. We had 74, and we couldn't process them all. So we were in a great situation. We were overwhelmed by the response. On the 17th through the 20th, myself, Captain Burdick, and the entire department helped through feedback. Luckily, majority of the individuals on that list were well-known within the department. There were some extremely strong candidates that almost everybody knew and everybody recommended. I would have to say that the 12 that we chose to be assigned to our department, so that's how it works, we say, yes, we'd like this individual assigned to our department. Metro hires them or offers them the position on our behalf, and then Metro sends them for a medical exam and a background check as part of their process. And so long as they pass those, those 12 people will then have an onboarding service at our department between a joint onboarding between Metro and us on April 3 and April 4. So I am very happy to say that these individuals are some of the best care providers in our area. So having the opportunity to choose from applicant pool of 74 was absolutely amazing. It was a testament to the guys. It's a testament to people wanting to respond and work 911 only, because if you can imagine, if you become a paramedic, your dream is to save lives. What private companies struggle with is the majority of their work is inner hospital transports, which is, you know, driving a person from one hospital to the other. So great opportunity. We're still, like I said, on a time crunch. On Thursday, March 23, now that we had the roster, or at least a tentative roster, we were able to apply to the IDPH for the transport license, so we did that. One of our first things that we had to do for assignments was hire our contract manager. The contract manager is one of the 12, and that contract manager provides care on the street, but also is the main contact for HR for Metro, does all the scheduling and everything like that. We were fortunate enough that an individual named Mike Morande applied and accepted assignment. He has vast experience with all aspects of EMS. He oversaw a much larger ambulance company, 90 employees, nine ambulances, and so he has great experience with everything. Has already been assigned, and Metro has been gracious enough to already this last week be officially hired by Metro, and he's helping with the implementation. So that is an unexpected gratuity received by them, and it's been great to have his help. I also worked with Mike on the streets. He's an exceptional paramedic. So he's a good person, cares about the community, cares about people, and he's really good at what he does. So the other 11, we will hopefully, on the committee meeting of the 24th, I will bring them in for a quick introduction and recognize them for the assignment to the city. So I also definitely would be remiss not to thank Captain Burdick, our EMS coordinator, for all his help and all that that's going on. So there's still quite a bit to do with implementation. The billing, which you guys had just went over last week, billing policy, the billing ordinance, that's all been forwarded to the billing agency that you guys selected, so they can start getting everything ready for, in 24 days, being able to bill for the services. We've also begun the implementation of the Nemesis compliant EPCR, so as part of our records management software. Now, the EPCR is much more in-depth because that's actually what's used for billing. So once the patient care report is completed, it's actually submitted to the billing agency and to the IDPH, so everything has to be connected: the billing agency, the EPCR, the hospitals, and the IDPH. So we're still working to make all those connections. That should be happening this week. We're planning on transporting to the four-area hospitals, and so all those connections have to be made, and will be made. We also had to choose the ambulance, the design and the logos on the ambulance. That's almost finalized. And then, something as simple as uniforms. What uniforms are these individuals going to wear? Our collective bargaining agreement states that they cannot wear uniforms that are official Belvidere Fire Department items. This is where I would like to thank the union, because they unanimously supported that they wear a uniform that is exactly resembles ours, except it says EMS on the front and back. Also like to thank them, because the day that we posted the hiring list, the union actually shared it on their Facebook page three minutes after it was posted, again, showing strong support. And all this couldn't have been done without the support of the guys and the support of the officers making this happen. So that's all for the update. I definitely want to thank the mayor, Shannon, and Mike for all the help, and you guys for helping to make quick decisions, because we had to make quick decisions on all these very, very complex processes. So thank you, guys, for everything, and I will be happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Woody? Honorable Woman Freeman?
Thank you again. So Chief, concerning Captain Cunningham's retirement, is he already retired and gone? Are we a man down right now?
No, ma'am. He's actually scheduled to retire on June 2. And something I had worked with in the budgeting process with Shannon's help, we built in a little bit of budget for salary to cover, because what happens was if you wait till June 2 and start the individual, if they don't have a basic license or if they're not firefighter, too, they would have to be then sent off to academy. And then each one of those shifts for those vacancies would be covered by overtime, so at a much greater cost than the individual's straight salary. So there's a little bit of a buffer. Once, if the budget is approved, or once it is approved, then he would be available on May 1 to be hired if it was that individual. We could probably wait, normally, a two-to-three-week orientation before he'd be on the vehicles providing service to the citizens. It is a unique situation, since he's already working 2448s, he's already a certified firefighter, he's already a paramedic, so that would be a shorter turnaround time. And if it was a longer turnaround time, we have up to three months built in for that, and we'd utilize that full three months. If this is the individual in this case, and he does pass the rest, then I would come to you sometime in May to actually request to hire him. And so no, Chad is still here, thankfully. He's here till June 2.
Okay, and then this new recruit, hopefully, that works out. Even though he's already certified and a paramedic and all that, he comes in at the bottom, right? And then you promote, I'm not sure how the rank goes, a lieutenant to captain?
Yep, so the, two questions there. The first one, yes, he would come in as the least senior member of the department, so he would start, you know, day one as a probationary firefighter for a full year. As far as the promotional lists, it's all controlled by state statute and the rules of the Police and Fire Commission. So there is actually promotional lists already created. So, there is actually promotional lists already created. And within those promotional lists, there are individuals that would be promoted so long as they pass a psychological assessment. Those individuals are Lieutenant Jason Swanson would be promoted to captain. And then, since that would create a gap as lieutenant, then firefighter Thornton would be promoted to lieutenant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Shadle? No, and I do want to thank you, Chief. You know, we didn't have, we, the city, and you didn't have a lot of time to be able to prepare for lifeline essentially going out of business or getting out of the paramedic business. And, you know, I know you've worked extremely hard on it. You brought a lot of great information, a lot of choices, a lot of information. And I appreciate it. I know the council appreciates it. And I think when you point out about the individual, hopefully, that will pass hiring muster, I think a lot of the things that Chief Woody sees with new recruits or filling open positions at the Belvidere Police Department, you know, when you can get somebody who's experienced or what have you, not only does it save the city money, funding, but it makes for a better transition in this case with public safety services, paramedic services explicitly in this case. So, I appreciate all your efforts. Great job, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Your Honor.
We have item three, finance and personnel on a finished business. We have none. Finance and personnel, new business, finance department update. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two items. We met with Sickich last week for our pre-audit planning meeting, and will soon begin gathering information and sharing it electronically in preparation for their May and June onsite visits. And also, when the city entered into an IGA with the Boone County Health Department for the COSAP grant in March of twenty-one, the calculation used to determine the monthly reimbursement to the city was that of a step-one officer. As you know, a veteran officer has been in that position since June seventh of twenty-one. After discussions between myself and Mayor Morris, the city requested, and the Health Department and the Department of Justice have agreed to adjust the rate of reimbursement to align with the salary of the current COSAP officer. This difference equates to an additional sixty-six thousand sixteen dollars over the course of the grant, which runs through September of this year. We've already received a check for just under fifty-five thousand, representing the difference from the start of the grant through January of this year. And the remainder will be realized each month with revised invoice amounts.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Any questions? Thank you very much for your hard work. I appreciate it. So do the taxpayers. We have item B and C, our appointments. I have an appointment of Jenny Tillema to the Idaho Public Library Board. And your packet is her resume. I think if you look at it, you'll agree that it's very outstanding. I did get a, I did get a chance to talk with Mrs. Tillema last Friday evening before I left here, and I was very impressed. As we all know, it's difficult to be able to get individuals to, you know, volunteer in this community. It takes a lot of time, and I know she is busy like all the rest of us. So, take my hat off to her, and I would like to make that appointment. And, I don't know, I guess with that, do I, I don't need, this is my appointment to make, correct?
No, this requires advising the council.
Could I make a, could I get a motion then to approve? Motion by Alderman Dan Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. So, that motion is to approve Ms. Jenny Tillema to the Idaho Public Library Board. Any questions? Any discussion regarding that? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have also an appointment of Paige Ainsley. And as well, she has a resume in your packet as well as a letter of recommendation. And once again, I did speak with Paige Friday evening, Friday early evening. And I was very impressed with her commitment as well. With that being said, could I get a motion to appoint Paige Ainsley to the Idaho Public Library Board? Please. Motion by Alderwoman Mohow, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And I think those are both going to be very good individuals to have on the board. Under other, A, Public Works Twenty-Twenty-Three Sidewalk Replacement Program Bid Tabulations. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo on your packet. We received four bids for our sidewalk, annual sidewalk replacement program. And I would recommend approval of a low bid from Stenstrom Excavation and Blacktop Group in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars for the city's annual sidewalk program. And note, this is for both our fifty-fifty program, any sidewalk work that we need to do on our own, and also includes all of the handicapped accessible returns on our street overlay program, which is the majority of the cost of the concluded in this proposals.
Okay, anybody want to make that motion for the low bid? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderwoman Frank. It wasn't the low bid by much.
Very close this year.
Yeah, it was very competitive. But it is a low bid. Any questions regarding the motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Brent, are most of our sidewalk replacements four-inch or six-inch?
By far, the majority is a four-inch.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Then, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And Brent, you also have item B, C, D, E. Keep going.
Next up, memo on your packet says for our annual tree maintenance program, three bids this year, the low bid being from Minahan's Tree Service, fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred dollars. I would recommend approval of a low bid from Minahan's Tree Service in the amount of fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred dollars for tree work from May one, twenty-twenty-three, to April three, of twenty-twenty-four, in the city of Belvidere.
Okay, that is the low bid. Motion by Alderman Flurry, I assume, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Can we get a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion? Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask about this. It says the budget for this work is forty thousand. And I notice this is over budget. Are we gonna change the budget then to reflect this?
No, typically, we will try to maintain the budgeted amount. We use plug numbers in there for the budget amount. And I was gonna basically hinge on storms and what we get for weather. If we have any emergency situations would cause that. But we will do our best to stay within the current budgeted amount.
Yeah, we use it as, we need it, they use it as they need it. In the past, we have had intangibles that, circumstances where we've had a tree which has fallen on somebody's pickup truck and that, you know, we didn't anticipate that would have to be removed and what have you. So, you never know what comes up. But, you know, I think historically, that's been pretty much within the wheelhouse. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Brent, this isn't tree trimming. This is strictly removal of trees that are dead or dying on the terraces, right? And then, if they're charging, you know, so much per inch for diameter, then, or they just do this for the flat fee of what they bid?
No, it's charged per each tree. So, depending on what the dimension is, that's per-inch diameter. So, we go out and measure each tree. We produce a list, give it to the contractor, and he takes it down, and that's how it's calculated.
That's what these are, is trees on the terraces?
These are terrace trees, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any concerns? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve a low bid of Minahan's Tree Service in the amount of fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred dollars for tree work from May first, twenty-twenty-three, through April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four for the city of Belvidere. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item C?
Next up is our landscape maintenance bids. We had three bidders this year for that. I would recommend approval of a low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars for the Twenty-Twenty-Three Landscape Maintenance Program.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mohow. And second, Alderman Porter. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Again, the low bid, not by a lot, but it is a low bid. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item B?
The mowing bid tabulations, we are going, in memo on your packet, there's gonna be three different motions needed for this one. The first one is the Water Department Properties. I would make a motion, recommend approval of a low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy dollars per mowing for the mowing of the Water Department sites.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions regarding that motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thanks. So, Brent, are these like closed, sealed bids that then we take the lowest? Ever since I've been here, we've used Lawn Care by Walther. So, there, you can't like negotiate these bids with your current supplier, right?
That's correct, they're sealed.
All right, any other questions? All right, we have the motion on the floor then to approve the low bid for Nico's Landscaping in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy dollars per mowing for the mowing of the Water Department sites. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed, thank you. And the next one, Brent?
Next motion, recommend a low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars per mowing for the mowing of the public work sites.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just noticing that this one's almost doubled since two thousand and nineteen. I'm just wondering if you know what the reason is for that?
That's just how the pricing is going. I can't give you any explanation other than that.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, motion passed, thank you. And?
And finally, the last motion is approval of a low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per mowing for the Farmington ponds. And note that the work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Director Anderson, is the ponds, is that just the Farmington that pays for that? Or do we all pay for it?
It's a special service area that's set up for the subdivisions themselves to pay for that.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We have the motion on the floor, the low bid for Nico's Landscaping in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per mowing for Farmington ponds. It will be paid from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Mr. Anderson?
Next up is the Source Water Protection Plan Engineering Proposal. Memo on your packet, the IEPAs requiring all public water supplies to complete a source water protection plan, and that plan has to be submitted to the EPA by no later than July twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. The source water protection plan is required to include a vision statement, the source water assessment, and an action plan. And attached to the memo is a proposal from Strand Associates for the engineering services required to complete that plan at a cost not to exceed eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Strand Associates in the amount not to exceed eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars to complete the source water protection plan, and that work will be paid for from Water Line Item sixty-one-seventeen-eighty.
Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding that motion? Price of doing business, Brent?
Yes, it's, we don't have much choice. It's a mandate from the IEPAs, so.
All right, hearing no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
And finally, for me, the, there's a resolution for improvement for Newburgh Road from Irene to Shaw. This is conjunction with what was previously approved for the engineering work for the STBG grant that we were awarded through R1 for the Newburgh Road Resurfacing Project from Irene to Shaw.
Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Any questions for anybody regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate it. We have item G, and we have the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce Street Closures Request for Twenty-Twenty-Three for the Buchanan Street Strolls. And Ms. Amy Nord here is with us. Hi, Amy, welcome.
Hi, thank you. In your packets, you received a letter outlining the dates that will be holding strolls this year. I would like you to notice that we have adjusted the times from twelve to six to one to five this year. And then, on the August twentieth date, we are requesting to do a one to eight P.M. That is the anniversary of La Costa Bora. And Maria is having a large tent on Buchanan Street, and she brings all of the tables and chairs from inside of her restaurant outside for the entire day. And then, she just asked that we could extend that timeframe for that date for her anniversary so she wouldn't have to stop right in the middle of the dinner hour and bring all those tables and chairs back inside, set up the dining room again, and then resume service. So, that's the reason for that extension is to celebrate their anniversary and continue serving through the dinner hour. If you notice, I apologize, I did not include this map in your packet, but I can pass it around if you'd like. We have adjusted the layout for strolls this year to keep the two municipal lots open. So, this will allow additional parking for anybody that attends the events. Except for Sunday, August twentieth, the Casa Car Show will also be attached to that stroll date. So, instead of closing Pleasant and using some of the area by the museum, we're going to park the Casa Cars in those two municipal lots instead of closing additional streets. So, we're just trying to keep the footprint small this year, keep parking available, and keep everyone happy.
Okay, so, could I get a motion for, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens? That's the three dates that are noted in the handout that you have before you. Sunday, June fourth, twenty-twenty-three, one to five P.M. Sunday, July twenty-third, one to five P.M. Sunday, August twentieth, one to eight P.M. Are there any other questions for Amy? Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor? All those in favor of the motion on the floor then, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item H is? And item H is, uh, is not necessary this evening. So with that being said, could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Flurry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? Motion passed. For the record, we adjourned at six fifty PM. Thank you.